City Business. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have the call, the roll call, please.
Monica Duran.
Here.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Genevieve Wooden.
Present.
Larry Matthews.
Here.
And Madam Mayor, I'm told that Janice Hoppy will be absent tonight, and we do have a quorum.
Thank you. Any changes to the minutes of April 11th or the study notes of April 4? If not, then they stand approved as presented. We have three proclamations tonight and a citizen recognition. Now, the citizen recognition is the most fun, so we'll put that toward the end of the proclamations, so you don't leave. All right, let me do that now. Once again, City of Wheat Ridge is a city of trees. We're being called Tree City USA once again. So let me read this proclamation. Whereas trees have been regarded as an important asset to the citizens of the community of Wheat Ridge, providing one of the first business opportunities in the 1860s, and whereas trees continue to be respected as an important part of the quality of life to the citizens of the city of Wheat Ridge and visitors, enhancing property values and community spirit. And whereas citizens, businesses, green industry, elected officials, and staff continue to work together to maintain and provide for tree-covered streets, parks, and properties as part of a comprehensive community forestry program. And whereas the city of Wheat Ridge has been awarded Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation. Now, therefore, I, Joyce J., Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, do hereby declare Friday, April 29th, as City of Wheat Ridge Arbor Day Celebration and encourage all citizens of businesses of Wheat Ridge to participate in this effort by planting a tree or shrub.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors, for the time on the agenda to discuss and present Wheat Ridge. It's 37th Tree City USA Award. There are only 91 communities within the state of Colorado that are Tree City USA awarded, and we are one of them. So I'd like to congratulate you and award Mayor J. and the tree councilors the Tree City USA Award. Thank you.
Margaret Paget, Forestry and Open Space Supervisor. And I want to thank the council for supporting us over the years with our trees within the city. And I would like to invite everybody to come out and celebrate Arbor Day this Friday at Lewis Meadows Park at 3300 Union Street. And we'll be doing a ceremonial tree planting at 10:00 AM. Thank you.
My name is Rick Murray. I'm the park manager for the city. First of all, I'd also like to thank council, Mayor J., for all their continued support. I would like to thank Zach Ware for coming tonight. It's his first time and hopefully one of many. And I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank Joyce May Morin for her dedication and her support for all our programs and her guidance. Thank you very much.
Now, we're going to have a proclamation regarding National Small Business Week. And I believe we also have Dot Miller. And I don't know, is Don Seifer here? Nope. Dot, do you want to come on up? What'd you call you? Are you the chair or the just president? Of the Wheat Ridge Chamber of Commerce? Here's the proclamation. Whereas America's progress has been driven by pioneers who think they take risks and work hard. And whereas from the storefront shops that anchor Main Street to the high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstone of our nation's promise. Whereas because this country's 28 million, 28 million small businesses create two out of three jobs in our country, in our, in our economy, we cannot resolve ourselves to create, we cannot resolve ourselves, the way it's read, to create jobs and spur economic growth in America without discussing ways to support our entrepreneurs. And whereas the city of Wheat Ridge supports and joins this national effort to help America's small business do what they do best, grow their businesses, create jobs, and ensure that our communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Now, therefore, the mayor and the city council of the city of Wheat Ridge do hereby proclaim May 1 through May 7, 2016, is National Small Business Week. And I'd like to have Dot Miller, who is the president of the Wheat Ridge Chamber, excuse me, the right one. Let me give you this proclamation. Here we go. There we go. Thank you, Dot. Do you want to say something?
Thank you so much, Mayor J. and members of council. This is an honor to be your chamber president. And I appreciate you proclaiming Small Business Week, as you know, and said in the proclamation that the U.S. is built on the backs of small business. We have a lot of them here in the Wheat Ridge community. And I am honored to be here to serve the needs and be a resource to those businesses. Thank you. Thank you so much.
We have one more proclamation, which is National Volunteer Appreciation Month. Ah, here comes somebody. Oh, here comes a bunch of them. These are, these are our police department volunteers, aren't they? Okay, I'm happy to read to them. Whereas National Volunteer Month is celebrated in April, and whereas the city of Wheat Ridge Police Department recognizes the value each volunteer brings to the police department, and volunteers help to improve the quality of life for the citizens of Wheat Ridge and increase community participation and awareness. Experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of our problems, and the need for the use of volunteers is vital to the success of our organization. And whereas during this week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service. And whereas the city of Wheat Ridge Police Department, through the city, volunteered, contributed more than 4,700 hours of service in 2015 with a conservative cost savings of more than $40,000 to the city of Wheat Ridge. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of Wheat Ridge do hereby proclaim and celebrate the month of April, 2016, as National Volunteer Appreciation Month. I do appreciate you being here. Dan Brennan, would you like to introduce your volunteers? Yeah.
So I just wanted to take a moment to comment on a couple of things that were in the proclamation. We started a volunteer program for citizens to participate in the police department about five years ago, and it took us a while to build a cadre of about 17 volunteers that could assist the police department in a variety of different ways. So these men and women help us in, in particularly, you'll see them as a citizen or as a council member at all of our special events. So the Criterion, USA Pro Challenge, Ridge Fest, the Carnation Festival, to name just a few of the events that they show up, they have a presence, they help us with traffic direction. We quite frankly, with the Criterion, would not be able to do what we do in terms of all of the traffic shutdowns that occur and the management of intersections as those bicyclists are racing without our volunteers and our explorers. They are, they are a real benefit. We gave you a very conservative sort of figure in terms of what they contribute. Forty-four thousand, 725 hours is what they donated to this organization last year. So at $10 an hour, you get about $47,000. You can't hire a good employee for about $20 an hour. So really, in, in my opinion, they, they bring in about $100,000 in terms of effort that we might otherwise have to pay for in terms of overtime or regular pay to do the things that, you know, our elected officials and our community members want. To give you an idea of the other things they do, we, we have a cold case investigator that works cold cases. He's a retired DA's investigator. He's going through all of our cold cases to see what other evidence needs to be submitted. He's done interviews. He's traveled actually across the country doing interviews with, with family members and witnesses associated with some of the cold homicide cases that we have. These folks help us out in our records section, doing work that an employee might, might otherwise have to do. And it really is, is a cost benefit. And then the other really important thing that I just wanted to remind council about is our police chaplain program. With the assistance of Pastor Scott Moore and, and several other chaplains, we've been able to start up a chaplain program in our volunteer program that provides, you know, emotional support, counseling, and, and just a feeling of, hey, people that work in the police department are important. And they have brought in food this past Thanksgiving, brought in food for all three watches, for the officers and our civilian employees that were working. So I'd like to really just give a round of applause to four of these representatives. And I'd like you all to know that we couldn't do it without you. So thank you very much for what you do. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Chief Brennan, would you want to get, get me those gentlemen's names and I can put them in the minutes and so folks can read who they are?
Those volunteers are incredibly important to our city. We're lucky to have them. Now, do we have a, do we have Bob Murphy here? Oh, Bob, come on up. Bob Murphy has, for years, has worked the South Shady. Come on up here, Bob. He has worked at the South Shady side of 30th Avenue from Wazworth to Kipling, clearing snow and ice off the sidewalks. He will work for days after a snowstorm, clearing the packed snow, ice as it melts, enough for him to handle. For health reasons, he no longer will be able to perform that volunteer service for the people. But I would like to have the city acknowledge his longstanding service with an appropriate proclamation, a certificate of appreciation for this work you've done for us. Thank you very, very much. And I'd love you all to give him a very big hand.
Say it's quite an honor for me, something that I mostly just to help out some people who couldn't walk, walks, especially the kids at Wheat Ridge High School or was cleaning off the bus stops. Especially came from having to go through heavy snowbanks where the plow driver let this. I regret not being able to safely do the work anymore. I say if I win Publishers Clearing House, say about the time the sun comes up on the north, I'll be glad to rent a couple of dump trucks and a Bobcat plow to clean the snow off a few places.
We'll hold you a, won't we? Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're going to move on to citizens' right to speak. And there'll be two sections of the meeting tonight. It'll be our regular business meeting, which we're about to conduct, and then we'll move into a study session. And the study session will have its own citizens' right to speak before it, which will be in regard to items on that study session. So now let's have our business meeting, starting with citizens' right to speak. And I have a list coming forward. Starting out with Michael Illlo, followed by Vivian Voss. Michael.
My name is Michael Illlo, I-L-L-O, 1132, 11302 West 38th Avenue. Okay. First, I'd like to say I heard about the fire in your home, and you have my sympathies, and I'm glad that nobody was hurt. The rest of what I have to say, it's going to be difficult, but it's always difficult up here speaking. It, I think it's, I think it's a shame that, you know, some people that speak have to receive hostility simply for talking about valid concerns or mentioning facts of truthful nature. I think two weeks ago, things got really out of hand. I feel like, well, my character was basically being attacked for two minutes, for, for over two minutes. When you spoke, you said things about me that were absolutely not true. And there wasn't a single thing that you talked about during that time that I ever said or implied. You were completely off the topic of what I spoke of. And instead, you said things that were not true and accused me of saying things, implying things, having an opinion of this or that, none of which was true. You can go look at the YouTube video two weeks ago. You can listen to every word I said, and not a single thing was mentioned when you spoke about me for two minutes and basically attacked my character. It's, it's hard, it was hard for me to listen to that and not be able to respond, not, not be able to defend myself. So, I mean, just to clarify, I was being accused of saying things about our council members and, and yourself being involved in other boards, city boards. I never mentioned anything like that. To be honest, I was never aware that you or any other council members were a part of any other appointed board. So that, I know that subject never came up. I was also accused of implying that there was some kind of monetary exchange going on between you and these boards. And again, I don't know why that was brought up. I don't know anything about it. I'm not saying that there's anything to it, but I didn't bring it up. I did mention my concerns about associations with political campaigns for special interests. So let me explain what the meaning of special interests, the definition of special interests does not have anything to do with money changing hands, from what I understand. I couldn't find a definition that talked about that. Oh. Vivian says she'd give me another three minutes.
Okay.
Okay. The definition of a special interest is a person or group seeking to influence legislative or government policy to further and often narrowly defined interests. Well, as you know, I spoke about the Wheat Ridge Wants 2B campaign, and by definition, that is a special interest. I also mentioned a word that you attributed to monetary exchange, cronyism. Well, a crony is a friend or an accomplice, or not accomplice, a friend or an associate. Cronyism is simply favoritism based on friendship or association. For example, if you're monitoring a group and you, the, the group is supposed to have equal opportunities to speak on subjects and, and speak, speak with an equal amount of time or, or an equal amount of interruption. And say if there is a friend or associate in part of this group, and you allow them to have more time to speak, you allow them to say things that are hostile without reprimanding them, you allow them to say things that are untrue without correcting them or interrupting them, that would be considered cronyism. It's the same with the citizen speakers. I remember when I started coming here regularly in January, the first thing that, the first night I spoke on January 20th, I was corrected for saying something, I was interrupted for saying something that I saw with my own two eyes and, you know, regarding the Create 38th Process about being told to put, to change the curb lines. I was interrupted and told that the Create 38th Process would not affect that, would not have any effect on that. It was told by you and another council member. I've heard other citizen speakers say, you know, say things that were way inaccurate and not get so much as a raised eyebrow. So I'm just saying that, you know, it's, it's hard for us to speak here. I would love to be up here speaking about something I really wanted to speak about, but I feel like I have to defend myself. And I feel like it's a form of intimidation, it's a form of censorship in a way. Because when somebody speaks, and they're not allowed to speak without interruption, and, and false things are said, interjected into their comment, that makes it, that gives them less of a voice than somebody who can just go on and on without interruption, without conflict. So, and I don't think that's what these, how these meetings should be conducted. And again, every single word you said about me two weeks ago had nothing to do with what I said, but I felt like you were really attacking my character, accusing me of making you uncomfortable, accusing me of implying things that I never implied or said. And it's not the first time I felt a sense of hostility towards people, not based on the, the technical quality of what they're saying or the truthfulness of what they're saying, but whether what they're saying politically is supportive of a particular special interest or not. So at any rate, I guess that's all I'm going to say for now. Thank you very much.
Michael, thank you for, for bringing that all up. And I think you and I need to have a nice chat and, and see where we're aligning. Okay. Vivian Voss? Oh, you and her time, okay. Bill Cosselemann? Followed by Fred Walker. You're next, Fred.
Hi, I'm Bill Cosselemann. I live at 30, C-O-S-S-E-L-M-O-N. I live at 3375 Fenton Street, right across from Panorama Park. And I've been a citizen here now for 30-some-odd years. My wife is 50, she's a citizen for 51. Today, we were driving down 38th. And after you folks have expressed interest in revitalizing 38th, I saw these doors encompass construction. And all they're lined up facing east. And I think, and just as a suggestion, I know there's somebody on council that's connected to that particular business, Compass Construction. I think it would be nice maybe to get rid of the doors. We're going to revitalize that end of 38th. That would be the first step that should be made. And I think that maybe a sign that says Compass Construction, a local Wheat Ridge business, would do you a lot more good than having a bunch of doors that look very ugly, very unsightly. And that's just my opinion. And besides that, I'd like to say that Wheat Ridge is great, and I hope you people make it greater. I think them words are similar to that one fellow that's running for president. Only, we're going to make it greater, I hope. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Appreciate it. Appreciate your time.
We, we've got the assignments. We're going to make it greater. Fred Walker, followed by Alan Krennic, I think.
I'm Fred Walker, live on Everett Drive in Wheat Ridge. And I have two points to make tonight. The first one is, I wanted to thank Larry Matthews for his willingness to stand up for the vote on 2B. Many of us felt that if we're trying to imitate Arvada's Old Town, it's just not the kind of geography that, that works that way. So that's the reason it was defeated, and I hope that others will stick up with Larry on this issue. The second point I wanted to make is that I've been playing tennis over at Panorama Park for the last 30 years or so, and the courts are in such bad shape that they've, about two or three years ago, they patched up the big cracks that were in the court's surface. But they, they just made it worse because now the ball bounces just anywhere. So you really can't count on a ball being hit back the way it should be. So whenever you can get something in the budget to resurface those courts at Panorama, I would surely appreciate it, as all the other Wheat Ridge players. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. And Alan Krennic.
Good evening. Alan Krennic, 2635 Pierce, Denver. I have several comments to make today. First of all, I'd like to, I have, would like to set up a meeting with Ms. McKenna of Code Enforcement. I've already talked to one of my district co-councilmen, and I would like to know if there's any other council members that would like to join. I have documentation clear back to 2000 of problems that I've had with the city. I've got documentation here of my lawyer filed with the police department perjury complaint, and the police department comes back and says, yeah, no problem, no, no perjury. It was just a harmless, harmless foul. But yet, this is the same complaint that I've had since 2009 on this. I can show you where the. I can show you where the city, I filed a district court case, and district court was told, was told to give the city municipal court the information for the transcript to be provided to district court and paid for, et cetera. Lo and behold, about the third section in, after they got the brief back and they looked at it, I got the transcript and I says, this isn't all the transcript. I filed a motion on this complaining that not all of the transcript was provided. Gerald Doe filed two papers to the district court saying, we can't give you something we don't have. But I do have, I did happen to find a copy of a search warrant that Judge Randall gave because I got, at that same court hearing, I got all the pictures thrown out that the code officer had presented because she was off the public right of way when she took the picture. She was in my yard and didn't have the right to come on the yard. This search warrant was given after that was thrown out, which should have never been given, because if you or I would go to court and not have the paperwork or whatever to present to the court, the court won't listen to it. So there should, there should not have never been a redo or do-over in this case. It took over a year before I found out that that case had even been sent back to the municipal court saying there was no, there was nothing they could do, and this was a due process on, and it showed everything on the due process with the transcript that was provided. Just, just a real short one. I have showed, I've got pictures here I'd like to present to you to let the city council look at of violations that I have complained about, and the city has taken anywhere up to fifteen years to do.
Do you want me to pass those out? Do you want me to pass those out to the council?
If you would, please.
Okay.
I only, I only have one set of copies, and I do have the one code that is rolling.
Okay, we'll keep them together and pass them around, okay? Thank you, thank you.
Is there any, I don't have anyone else signed up for public comment? I'm going to take a minute to do my own public comment. Last weekend, a severe fire did destroy much of my home and its contents. And tonight, I just want to take the opportunity to thank so many of you, so many. West Metro Fire Department, they just had formed within three days. Wheat Ridge Police Department, I mean, formed, you know, they had come together. Wheat Ridge Police Department, there was unbelievable support there from officers as well. I've got names, but I don't want to take too much of your time. Tremendous Support stayed with me the whole time, even though it kind of went on and on. They'd even arranged to get my kitty cat to Animal Hospital, Wheat Ridge Animal Hospital, who took the cat in for boarding, checked his eyes out, checked his lungs out. I, he spent the night there. I don't believe they knew that I was a public official, but I still have never received a bill from them. They were very kind to me. And I want to thank my elected official comrades here, all of them who have called, written, as well as staff, city staff, as well as regionally. It's like I could sit here and say thank you all night long, and I still wouldn't be able to say enough. It's made that walk back into that black scarred, what's left of that house, a lot easier knowing that I had all that, those supports. There are here, here, here spots all over the place, and I appreciate it very much. A fund was started by Janice. Total surprise, kind of embarrassing, to help cover what insurance does not. There's a lot of deduction, there's, as you all know, depreciation, maintenance afterward, but I really appreciate it. And a little group of kids did a lemonade stand, almost brought me to tears. I hope it never happens to any of you, but if it does, I've got your back. So, thank you very, very much. So, let's go on to this meeting. Are there any changes to our agenda tonight? Nope. Let's move on with Council Bill 082016.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Council Bill Number 082016, An Ordnance Approving a Zone Change From Planned Commercial Development To Planned Industrial Development, and a Request For Approval Of An Outline Development Plan For Property Located At 12700 West 44th Avenue, Case Number WZ-15-10. At issue, the request for approval of a zone change from planned commercial development, PCD, to planned industrial development, PID, and for approval of an outline development plan for property located at 12700 West 44th Avenue. There is a concurrent request for approval of a specific development plan for the same property, which will be considered for approval by resolution during the same public hearing for the ordinance on second reading. The intent of the PID is to construct a high-quality indoor self-storage facility.
This is first reading, so we can move right on with the motion?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 08-2016, An Ordnance Approving A Zone Change From Planned Commercial Development To Planned Industrial Development, and a Request For Approval Of An Outline Development Plan For Property Located At 12700 West 44th Avenue, on first reading, order it published, public hearing set for Monday, May 23, 2016, at 7:00 PM in City Council Chambers, and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Matthews. Please go ahead and cast your votes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Item two, Mr. Ann.
Motion to award the 2016 Overlay Project Base Bid And Bid Alternates 1 and 2 To Martin Marietta Materials Westminster, Colorado, in the amount of $1,655,969, with a contingency of $82,800, for a total amount not to exceed $1,738,769. Issue. The annual street resurfacing project was developed to provide needed maintenance treatments to a number of selected streets by priority in accordance with the citywide maintenance plan. The program is intended to extend the life of pavement on streets that are structurally sound. For the 2016 project, 44th Avenue will be overlaid along with other selected local streets. The project also includes the following. Concrete and handicap ramp replacements on streets being resurfaced, striping maintenance of high-volume streets throughout the city by priority, and spot pavement patching citywide. The city bid represents the last of three preventative maintenance projects that the city will implement this year. Slurry seal, crack seal, and overlay projects. The overlay is expected to extend the useful life of the streets treated from seven to fifteen years. Asphalt and concrete rehabilitation at Anderson Park, the Richard Hart Estate, and the Active Adult Center are also incorporated into the resurfacing project bid package as bid alternate one, and speed hump installations as bid alternate two. Six bids were open on April 5, 2016. All came in higher than the engineer's estimate and the advertised budget range. However, staff is recommending that the lowest responsive bidder, Martin Marietta Materials, be awarded a contract for the base bid and alternate bids one and two in the full amount of $1,655,969, plus $82,800, approximately five percent as a contingency.
Thank you. Do we have any staff report that we need, or are you just available?
No staff report, Your Honor, unless there's questions from the council.
Are there any questions of staff? Then we can go ahead and move on to the motion, please.
I move to award the 2016 Overlay Project Base Bid And Base Alternates 1 and 2 To Martin Marietta Materials Westminster, Colorado, in the amount of $1,655,969, with a contingency of $82,800, for a total not to exceed $1,738,769.
Second. Seconded by Ms. Wooden. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion carries, motion carries seven zero.
We have a pretty quick meeting tonight, that really concludes our business portion. Are there any city manager manners?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have a few updates and announcements. Margaret Paget, our Parks and Forestry Supervisor, earlier mentioned that we are having Arbor Day celebration this Friday, so if you're available, please come on out, 10:00 AM at Lewis Meadows Open Space, that's at 33rd and Uppam, or Union Street, I'm sorry. And we're going to be planting some trees with some Wheat Ridge High School kids. And the annual kite flights and Dia de los Niños festivals are this Saturday at Anderson Park from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Hopefully, it's not raining like it is right now. As a reminder, too, our final meeting, public process for the Create Your Thirty-Eighth Open House, is 6:00 PM at the Recreation Center. That's April 27th, this Wednesday. And why I mention that, I also want to mention that staff is working on scheduling a meeting to report back to one of our primary stakeholders in this process, the 38th Avenue businesses. Right now, we're shooting for Thursday, May 12th, to do two meetings, one in the morning at 9:00 AM and one in the evening at 6:00 PM. The purpose to report back to all the property and business owners along the 38th Avenue corridor, report back to what the Create Your Thirty-Eighth process was from the beginning to the end, what the outcomes were, and then provide another opportunity for them to provide some comments before we come back to City Council in May, I think, May 16th. So we, location hasn't been determined yet, but we're trying to find a spot on the corridor, 38th Avenue corridor, we'll let you know soon. We will be sending invites out to all the business and property owners along 38th Avenue. Thank you.
City attorneys matters.
Nothing tonight, thanks.
City clerk?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Elected officials. Do you want to start, Mark?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Urban?
I'm good this evening, thank you.
Mr. Pond?
Well, I'm just going to throw in and reiterate the kite flight festival, which I will be at on Saturday, if I can get the kids all geared up. If not, I see there's win a free kite at 11 o'clock, from 11:00 to 11:30, so I hope to see everyone there.
So you want the free kite?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Davis?
I don't have a lot, I just, just in case, I'll update this on this, at the study session, but in case folks watch the council meeting, not the study session, my first one, my first catch-up with Kristy is on May 5th, from 5:30 to 7:00 at Clancy's. I'll be hosting this, we'll be talking about some agenda items that we've talked about in the study sessions, and just trying to get point of view from folks, get updates, their thoughts and suggestions. So please join me there, I'll be, I'll be springing for the snacks and probably iced tea and water, and the rest of Clancy's is on you. So hopefully, we'll see you 5:30 to 7:00 on May 5th.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Sounds like it's iced tea, iced tea water and ketchup.
Yeah, ketchup, exactly. No burgers, though.
No burgers, though, okay. Well, since you brought the subject up, Councilman Pond and I have a meeting on the 21st at the Rec Center at 9:30, is that right? May 21st, right. So District 3, please put that on your calendar.
Just briefly, I'd like to personally again thank Mr. Murphy for all the effort that he has put in
Oh, thank you.
On 38th Avenue, because I've watched you for years and just really appreciate everything you've done for us. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Larry, for saying that.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you again, Mr. Murphy. Ms. Wooden, you're it. You have nothing to report, all the way down to the end. All right. I believe that counts, I mean, completes our business meeting, and we'll now move into the study session. And as mentioned earlier, if there are any public comment on the study session, now is the time. And he's going back there to get some. I see Ms. Vivian Voss has signed up for comments on the study session. Ms. Voss?
Good evening, Vivian Voss, 6920 West 47th Place. I was at the last meeting where the DIRT Task Force survey was presented and talked about, and amongst council members, there was some, how do we go about updating this? And I would just like to strongly encourage that this would be a prime opportunity time for the task force to made up, to be made of citizens only, to bring forward an updated list. I don't think a special group, I don't think anyone on City Council, and I don't think any businesses should specifically be represented, and this should be a citizens only. And the citizens should not be a representative of any group that they are well-known for. I think this would be a good time to give the citizens a true input into one aspect of where their effort, where the city's efforts are going, and where the citizens' money is going. It would seem that they would need to ask staff and council for directions on some items, and I think that would be easy enough to do. They can use the NRS and any vision plans, surveys, and other data that's available. I don't, having gone over what was presented in 2007, the members were, were quite a few, and I think it just needs to be limited to five, seven, or nine members, so that there's not a lot of special interests, and we can get this done quickly, and hope that it can be done, just a redo or a relook at the '07, and not have to reinvent the wheel on the things that need to happen in the city. It talked about meetings posted, and I'm wondering if those are public meetings, how often those would be, minutes posted, would Channel 8 be participatory in these meetings? And I would suggest that meeting at the Grange would be a very neutral place for this to happen, whenever there are meetings of this task force. And then just one question I read, but I didn't understand what it was about, it was talking about land banking, and if that could be spoken to tonight, so that citizens understand what that is about. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, as I understand, we're not going to be doing item number one tonight?
Correct. Item one, the recommended tax and licensing code amendments. City Treasurer DeTulio is busy this evening judging capstone projects over at the high school, so he asked if we could defer that, and we've moved that to May 9th, so we'll put that back on the May 9th schedule.
So let's move on to public improvements at Gold Center. That would be you, Mr. Goff.
That's me, sure, thank you. Let me pull up my, and we have Mr. Art here also to help present and ask any questions or answer any questions. This is, this item is- This is, this item is public improvements at what we're calling the Gold Center. It was a former Gold Center, which included the Gold's Grocery Store at 26th and Kipling. That property has been sold, and there's a developer looking at making some improvements to the, to the shopping center. They're looking for some new tenants, and they're in discussions with a few different tenants, is my understanding. We would like to take advantage of this opportunity while this developer is making improvements to the center to potentially help them with the streetscape that, that borders this property on Kipling and 26th. If you've driven by it, you can, you can tell it's, it doesn't have sidewalks, it doesn't have landscaping, and it's, it's just not real pretty right now. And the developer understands that and agrees and would love to do something in, hopefully, cooperation with the city. Also, this is a major entryway into the city on Kipling from the south, and we have identified this as a, as a location for a future monument sign that identifies you're coming into Wheat Ridge. And we do actually have a budget in this year, or a budget in this year, CIP budget for monument signage throughout the city, and so this could be one area that we, along with a streetscape project, we could look at putting a monument sign there. We've been working with the developer over the last couple of months and trying to get bids and quotes on what a project would cost to do a streetscape along these two court, these two streets, and right now, the bids are coming in at about $300,000 to do the whole project. That would include sidewalk and landscaping along 26th and Kipling. City doesn't have a budget for this. The developer doesn't have a lot of funds to put towards the whole project. They're not required to do any streetscape because they're not making enough improvements. They don't reach that threshold in what they're doing to the building to, to trigger automatic streetscape improvements. So they're not required to do it. They would like to do something, and they're asking if the city could potentially help them with that. They are, they have been working with Live, is Britta here, too? Britta Fisher, Britta Fisher's here. Local, Local Works? I'm sorry, I keep forgetting. Previous Wheat Ridge 2020, Local Works. They've been working with them and also the Wheat Ridge Business Association, and Mr. Fitzgerald sits on that. So they've been, they've applied for some grants. I think I've already gotten some grants. They're potentially applying for some loans also through these organizations for this project. So Steve, is there anything I missed? I just want to give a general overview, then we can open up for questions.
No, that's it. There's nothing else.
Well, team, let's shoot him a question. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is that the bid from center construction, there's a statement in there that that bid excludes monument signage? Is that excluding the city signage?
It's correct. We asked them to just get a bid for the streetscape itself. The city is, is working. Scott has been in contact with the company that did the, the large monument sign at Kipling and I-70, and to see if we could get a smaller scale down sign for here and to get a price. So we'll do that separate. It would be designed within the scope of the project, but separate bid.
Okay. And as far as, do we have any idea what the cost of that will be, or?
Have you heard back yet, sir?
No, we've, we've got $50,000 allocated in the capital investment program this year for monument signage, so we're going to try and stay under that. We also have a few of those smaller little entryway signs like we put up last year, you know, over closer to Sheridan. We'd like to get a few more of those up, too, but we're confident we can stay within the budget that we set aside for this year.
And based on the, the plan that's in place, it's indicating that there would not be installation of electrical in the bid, but would the sign that we're looking at include any sort of lighting to it? And would we be able to ask that there be electrical laid, but not necessarily touched by the, contrary, I'm not exactly sure how that would work, but at least lay the groundwork for that?
Yeah, that's, that's something we would work with on the, the streetscaping portion, the sidewalk. There, there will be some undergrounding work that we're anticipating that will be needed as part of this. So, you know, we would work that into the, into the bid as well.
Ms. Davis.
So I have a quick question. This bid excludes all asphalt work, but are the new owners planning on doing asphalt work? I'd hate to do all this nice corner stuff and have the asphalt not.
Yeah, they, they pulled it out because the parking lot is a complete separate project, but they will be relaying the parking lot and restriping it to make it more efficient.
So is this really limited to landscaping?
Sidewalk.
And signage and sidewalks.
Okay.
And excavation.
Yeah, we really worked with them, again, over several months to, to keep this really separate. You know, we didn't want to present City Council a project where it looks like we're making improvements to the, to the private property, but this is really focused on a streetscape project, which we, we have done across the city in many different areas. We, we really feel that this is, has an economic development benefit and it just also meets one of the city's goals of, of improving our corridors and the aesthetic appeal of our corridors and entryways. So, so we asked them to really keep it separate. We actually even broke down the, their final $300,000 bid into three segments, and one just focusing on the very hard corner to wrap around 26th and Kipling. Again, that's the most visible piece that, you know, drivers see when they're driving in, and that's where a monument sign would go. And so that portion could be done separately, we believe, for about $100,000, and then the rest of the project going down 26th would probably be another $200,000 to, to finish out the, the walk and the landscaping. So that's something to consider, too, if, if you just want to focus on, on the hard corner, which would include the city's monument signage. We did get the cost broken down to that, too.
Sure. Mr. Fitzgerald.
I just wanted to say that this all started with the Wheat Ridge Business District, and we have given them grants for various things, matching grants for various things. And both Local Works and the city have been dealing with them and found them extremely easy to deal with and very amenable to making their center attractive as an entrance to the city. I believe they're spending about $600,000 upgrading that center. And so the intention of the business district was to pardon this crassness, but to goad them into more improvement. And they've been extremely receptive to the whole idea of.
Through the matching.
Right. So this looks like a very good project to me. It will really change the appearance of the interests of the city.
Ms. Wooden.
Do we know what tenants are going to be in the building?
They're negotiating with a few tenants right now, but they've asked us for that to remain confidential at this point.
But do they have people interested? I'm just wondering, is it going to be full?
They certainly do for the, for the larger center, and it would be a sales tax-producing business, too.
Okay.
So you're looking at this as, as an economic development kind of a direction?
Very much so. One of the things that limits that center is that, that curb appeal that the center does, that currently it lacks, certainly give it some sort of push to it.
Ms. Rand.
Patrick, can you, for the sake of everyone here, explain what Local Works is, is putting into this? And is it the Housing Authority, did you say?
The Wheat.
Or the Wheat Ridge Business?
Yeah.
Can you kind of put in what, or let us know what the funds are, how they're divvied up and how it's going to be spent?
And if it's okay with you, if Britta Fisher would come up, the executive director of Local Works, she's been working with these folks directly, and let, maybe let her start off with the discussion she's been having with them, because there's some grants, I think they've already received and been approved, and there's some things that are still in the works.
Thank you. My name's Britta Fisher, F-I-S-H-E-R, and I'm the director of Local Works. And thanks for that question, Councilwoman Duran. Local Works is a community and economic development nonprofit and has been partnering with the city on many fronts and also staffs the Wheat Ridge Business District. The business district, as outlined in the memo, has made a grant of $13,750 for the improvements to the building to date. That's broken out as facade improvements, signage improvements, and some landscaping improvements. $750 of landscaping improvements, and that is what prompted the business district to say, that is not nearly enough for that corner. It's a stark landscape of asphalt. And so the board members of the Wheat Ridge Business District asked me to go back to the clients and say, what can we do to get more greenery? And so that's the Wheat Ridge Business District portion, and then Local Works has a $50,000 low-interest loan on the improvements to the building. And depending on what option that you consider tonight, we would be willing to underwrite them for a greater amount. However, they are getting to us some of the documentation that it would take for us to look at a larger amount. While they underwrote just fine for the $50,000, of course, if we're making a larger loan, we'd need to look at, do they have the cash flow and income to pay back that loan? We also did talk with some of the bankers that work with our organization about what's the private market appeal for this type of loan, and the answer was very little. The streetscape is not something that earns income, and so therefore, it's a difficult one without them restructuring all of their debt, and that would be an interesting and difficult exercise for the client at this point. So they've been good to work with, they're amenable to making it look better, but it is a difficult project to do without some assistance, and so that's why there's some options before you this evening, and I'm happy to answer further questions as we go along.
Maybe to add to that, as I mentioned, Ms. Rand, earlier, the city doesn't have a specific budget for this. We do, though, have $100,000 in our CIP budget that we earmark for public-related improvements, and we don't necessarily have a project. There are a couple of projects we could put that towards, and Scott's probably going to kill me, he's probably already got it spent, but this is the exact kind of project that, that could be used for, it's $100,000. We do also have a traffic signal going in at 32nd and at the Applewood Shopping Center that the city's probably going to have to contribute to, so that money could also go to that. But if you, if you chose, and we could, the money could go towards this project, that $100,000, that's budgeted.
Ms. Fitzgerald.
Just want to clarify that when Britta talked about grants, they were matching grants. So, yeah.
Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yeah. Mr. Urban.
Thank you. With respect to the, so they've already invested about $200,000 into the property. Is that $200,000 that they've invested, including the $50,000 grant, the $13,750 amount, or is that above and beyond that? Above and beyond that?
No, it's inclusive.
That's inclusive of that? And so how much of their own money have they invested in the improvements?
They have not yet drowned, drawn down all the loan funds, so to date, they've spent about $190,000 and have not yet gotten their matching grant, but some of the grant dollars and loan dollars, they're both work as reimbursements, would be for some of the work that's been done to date.
So, but how much of their own, outside of the loans that we provided them, how much of their own capital has been put into these investments? Do we know?
$189,000.
And then, so the $50,000 loan from Local Works and the $13,750, then the monument signage for the city, that's in addition to that?
Mm-hmm.
Correct. So that's $113,000. Then adding in the $272,000, that's $385,000 that through loans or otherwise, the city is investing in the property? Does that sound all right? Okay.
Clarify, the monument sign, the welcome to Wheat Ridge sign is a sort of a different matter, because that.
Sure. Hold on, hold on. I have one other question. And then as far as maintenance of the sidewalks that we're installing, are those going to be maintained by the property owner? Do we have any sort of outline of how that's going to be controlled? Or, because we're putting them in, I don't want them to assume that we're taking care of it then at that point, so do we have some kind of agreement with them or understanding?
Yeah, we would, we would treat that the same as we, we treat all the public improvements, like the, you know, improvements that were put on, on the Sprouts property, that, so they'd be maintained by the city.
And one last question is related to, what is CDOT's perspective on this or involvement relative to the improvements to Kipling proper?
Yeah, I, I don't think we've really gotten that far into the nuts and bolts of CDOT yet. Most of the improvements we're talking about are along 29th that will affect Kipling a little bit, and, and we've, we've made that aware that, yeah, we'll need to, yes, 26th, we'll need to contact CDOT for anything along Kipling.
Thank you.
Mr. Pond.
Well, I want to reinforce a couple of things that we, we just haven't talked about them for a while, but the monument sign package, the entry identification, as well as, at the largest scale, which this is one of them, and at the smaller scale, which are the neighborhood designation, I think are obviously extremely important. And we've had several discussions in study session and on, on, on the dais here over the last six years, probably, regarding, regarding those initiatives. I want to make sure that we're kind of honoring that as, as a component of this and understand the, the separate nature. This corner was always intended to have a monument sign on it and a significant one, and it should. If you think about the south side of town and the entry points that we have, this is probably the one that we can really celebrate. Obviously, the one that's right outside of our doors here tonight is a little bit more constricted in our ability to actually do, do things because of the property, the property ownership around, around that. So this is a real opportunity. At the very least, we need to, I think, live up to the direction that we've previously given as it relates to making sure that the monument sign and the entryway is fashioned as robustly as any of the other ones in, in the city that, that we've taken great care on, whether that's 38th at Sheridan, whether that's Kipling and I-70. This is, in my mind, you know, that, that, that type of a level by traffic count and by opportunity. So I think we need to make sure that we think about the conversations and the context that we've already provided from, from, from that discussion. To that extent, obviously, I think that it's important for us, as discussed in, in this, in this memo, to be, to, to be very serious about the hard corner here and make sure that we are investing or helping to invest in, in that, in that, in that landscape, because it truly is an important entry point. So I, to the extent that this continues down 29th, I will just chime in and say that, in fact, because this is close by and I am, I'm driving past this multiple times a day, I absolutely agree, the, the area is, I mean, I don't think it's an exaggeration to say that the landscaping and the, and the surface treatments that are outside of this facility are, are, you know, I use the term blighted, they're in very, very poor condition, and they absolutely, this is, this is a great opportunity for us to address that, and I absolutely believe that some of the businesses that have come into that, like Chuck Wagon and some of the, some of the other businesses, I think, who have made Wheat Ridge their home, will, in, in many ways, deserve the, the attention to this, to this frontage. So I, I certainly support us making sure that we, that our response to this is robust as it can be.
Ms. Wooden.
I have a question under option number one. It says, if the city was to fund a portion of this, that the private equity financing does not normally fund landscaping improvements, what options would the, would the Westside Company have for finding the, the balance of the funds if the city only did part of it? I mean, would that be a realistic option for them?
So in, in that instance, option one, really, that only gets done is that hard corner. They could approach Local Works about attempting to fund the rest of it. Once again, I think in option three, we define that that's kind of looks, they're funded by the city, so is that the city just funding the whole project as it is? So at this point, using option one, it would just be the hard corner that would be complete. The remainder of the landscape would not be done.
Okay. As I look at the drawing, I, I do like that there are defined sidewalks over there in this plan, and I think that's important to consider, that right now, the cars can go kind of anywhere they want, and so this defines the entrance points for where cars are going to go into that area in general. in general. We might have more option for walkability under this plan, because it looks like it goes all the way down to the next street behind, and then it goes all the way up to Kipling. So the fact that there are defined sidewalks and defined entrance and exit points for this project, where previously we have not had that, is a plus in my mind, something to consider when we talk about walkability in the city. Also, I'd just like to say that I do support signage. We've talked about this again several times, and the importance it is to our city and to define, you've now entered Wheat Ridge, and what does that look like? And we've talked about that before. So continuing in that plan, I also agree, is important.
Mr. Matthews.
When we do talk to CDOT, it would be awfully nice if we could maybe twist their arms a little bit and consider that they would extend the sidewalk curb and gutter improvements down to the park in front of the Bradley Gas Station. It's, that's kind of ugly. It would just leave that little patchwork piece of ugly, because we've got new sidewalk there that was installed fairly recently in the park in the last few years, I think. And that would kind of tie in too with the new stuff that's been done on the other side of the, either side of Kipling, across Crown Ridge. But I'm not sure we have the money for it, but if we get into something with CDOT, there may be some economy of volume. And just keep it in the back of your mind.
I'm hearing a general warming feeling to the idea of this. It seems to me that there's a couple, three things we need to think about or decisions, both the monument sign, whether to go with a, what you call a hard corner, and how large would that hard corner be?
The monument sign on the hard corner?
Right.
I think there was, in your packet, there was just a, kind of a initial version of what it could look like. If you can picture the one at Kipling and I-70, that's probably one of the largest monument signs we have. And when they put, when they designed that, they did scale down and gave us some options for smaller size. We're still having, playing some phone tag with the company that did that, so we don't have exact prices. So do you remember, what was the size? Is that on there? I can't read it.
15 feet.
15 feet?
We debated whether it was 25 or 15.
15.
Yeah, about 15 footer, I think.
I think beyond that, is there any, for the $100,000 price, there's no landscaping then, it's just the sign?
No, the sign would be, again, a separate budget. We have 50,000 put aside for signage, and I'm hoping it wouldn't use up that full amount so we could still do some smaller ones across the city. The $100,000 would go to the sidewalk and landscaping on the very hard corner.
What I think is, how far down would it?
Yeah, it would go, let's see.
North of Bradley. Yeah.
It'd be north of, south of Bradley, excuse me, and then wrap around the corner to the first entrance to the center.
Okay. And might I point out that one of the important factors in this is that it closes an access point that's way too close to the intersection. So currently, there's two access points off of Kipling, and this would close the one that's closest to the intersection and increase public safety at that corner as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fitzgerald.
Looking at the options here, I think any of the options that require the tenant to borrow money for this is obviously not going to fly, because they've negotiated with the bankers already, and that's not going to work. So I think it comes down to, in my mind at least, it comes down to two choices. One is that we pay for this and consider it a public benefit. You know, we paid for 38th, for example, out of our cash from Sheridan to Harlan as a public benefit to make that street look good. So this is, this is just carrying on that same kind of improving the appearance as it comes into the city. The other option in my mind is that the city pay for part, and we ask Local Works to negotiate a loan for another part until we reach the needed amount of money. And I think it's still in negotiation, right? I mean, there's, nothing is, nothing is a done deal yet. So I think we can just give direction, that that's, yeah, that if they could be creative and we can have the city pay for some, and Local Works loan the rest, and so the tenant, as he is able, could repay in some way. Maybe you could defer payment for a while or something like that until they get tenants, you know.
Yeah, Mr. Fitzgerald, thank you. That was a good point. I should have mentioned that at the beginning. We're not, tonight, we're not really looking for real specific, I mean, it has to be final direction or decision points. We're just trying to get a pulse from council of how much the city would like to participate in this project. And we're still working with the developer, they're still working on their finances, and we just wanted to get sense tonight, how far to go.
Yes. Do we understand? Mr. Urban again.
Thank you. Do we have an idea of the industry that potential tenants are coming from at all? You said it was confidential, but is there any indication of the industries involved?
Retail.
Marijuana's retail.
Tradition in this business is a very good sales tax producer.
What industry is it in? That's the question.
Home and garden.
Yeah, I guess, the, I'm leaning, I'm just, I wouldn't mind lending money to an individual or an organization or a business that would improve the hard corner. And I appreciate the need to have the signage, and I want the signage to be there. I'm leaning more towards option one with a blend of some kind of financing. My concern is, have we done any underwriting to this business as to whether or not they are capable of paying back this loan? What kind of underwriting are we doing to ensure that this entity is able to fulfill on their obligations?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Urban. The underwriting was done back in August, when we made the initial loan commitment. So to make any further commitment, we've asked them to essentially reapply, to submit all of their financial documents so we can see how the cash flow is actually working. Because when we first lent to them, it was off of projections and some history, because it's not fully leased up. And so there were some projections about lease up and things like that, and we want to see how much has been realized to date.
Okay. And then, do you have any indication that the retail sales tax income from whatever businesses may be would generate, not necessarily to cover the entire cost, but either to perform on loans or to be able to see a benefit from this cash-wise?
Yes, the tradition for this garden, whatever you call it, home and garden center, traditionally does create enough sales tax that they could, they could pay the lease rate that would be deemed enough to repay a loan. I'm not sure what that number is that they're repaying, but it would help tenant up that center too. There are a few vacancies in the site. By beautifying that center, it's going to make it much more attractive.
And then as far as an S-TIP or other tools, have those been considered, and how can that be looked at?
So we've talked about S-DEP in another aspect. So this business, there's relocation costs for this business that's already existing to move into the site, potentially for their reimbursement for their costs to relocate into this site. There's about a $300,000 cost, and they would look for a portion of that perhaps to be reimbursed through either the BDZ or the S-DEP. So not to the developer, to the business.
Understand that. And then, just as a closing, I'd like to make sure that these private entities are putting as much or more into this project than we are. I understand that the streetscaping and the hard corner and the monument sign are part of what we're looking at, but I want to make sure that we're not carrying water for individuals that otherwise could take care of themselves.
Ms. Davis, do I see a finger up there?
Yeah, I just, I just want to add something. I think, actually, I know a lot of folks that live over in that area. And it's interesting, because it kind of goes back to some of the things that we've talked about in our city as far as safe travels in all aspects, if you're walking or riding or driving. And that corner's always been a questionable corner. You can cut through the, I don't do it, but you can cut through, cut through the corner. And I think the other thing is, is you find a lot of folks walking from their neighborhood to Crown Hill, and it would just allow more of that walkability, more of that traffic, both, again, by foot and by car or by bike, to those businesses as well. I know some folks have kind of related that corner, some folks that I know have related that corner to a corner that they know, I think, in Minnesota, an area they know in Minnesota that's by a lake, that, you know, there's an ice cream shop, and you could, you walk to the Crown Hill Park, you stop, you get your ice cream, you get your coffee, you know, those kinds of things. But again, it creates that kind of neighborhood place, you know, and we're talking about a different street, that neighborhood place that promotes retail businesses, that supports retail businesses. And so I think, although, again, I think a lot of the burden of this upgrade of the building and those types of things do need to be on that of the owners, I do think that as a city, we need to make sure to create an area or a sidewalk and those kind of things, drainage or whatever's needed on that corner, to make sure it's successful for our residents and safe to get there as well. So, just another thought.
Mr. M.
What I was going to say is, I know we have to invest in our community, you know, to get anything back. So I think, looking at, you know, if the city is going to, like Mr. Fitzgerald said, you know, meet halfway here and then see what other kind of creative financing we can do to get this done. But I would like it to be, you know, safe over there and appealing, and it is a landmark coming in through there. So, I mean, I'd like to get a consensus on that tonight.
Are you ready, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Well, let her...
Oh, you want to go ahead? I thought you were asking for him, for me to have him.
Yeah, either way. So can we get a consensus that we would like to provide, is it half of the financing here, or a portion?
It's negotiable.
Negotiable? Okay, so let's...
Let's just say that we empower them to negotiate for a mixed plan.
A mixed plan with some creative financing.
Right.
On that corner.
That's very, I think that's the direction. That'll give some flexibility to bring back some options and work with the...
Council is favorable toward this improvement and wanting to help out and work it out. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, before you take on the next subject, I feel compelled to offer my historic perspective. And I've mentioned this to Mr. Fitzgerald, and I think, Mr. Pond, too. As a former council member representing District 3, I believe it was in the 1999 or 2000 budget, there was $100,000, I think it started in 1999, there was $100,000 set aside for that corner, for signs, when we started doing monument signs. And the year kind of went on, and it's like, and the stuff on 38th Avenue came up. They wanted to do the Harland to Sheridan. And, well, could you, could we just, could we take that $100,000 and put it over? Okay, okay, we promise you, next year, it'll be. And then, and then the next year came, and they still needed more on 38th Avenue, and it just kept getting promised, and it never got done, never. So big isn't necessarily better, but something there, because it's been 26, or 16, 17 years since that was first proposed and promised, and it's never been done. So, right on. And I kind of hesitated to say this on TV, Mr. Goff, but you have a page on the website about squashing rumors.
Fact-finder.
Fact-finder, okay. And I'm not trying to blindside you or anything, but I've heard from two different people that the plan for this property is to tear the building down and put in apartments. So you might want to address that on your fact-finder page.
First I've heard of that.
Okay, all right.
I can tell you this evening, we have not heard of that.
Mr. Fitzgerald, I would like to make a comment.
Yeah, just one comment. One other thing about this is, if you look at the survey we did last year, one thing that continually pops up is that people want us to encourage quality businesses in Wheat Ridge. And obviously, we're better off encouraging quality businesses if we help to have a...
Vermeil.
Yeah, yeah, just like, yeah. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Can we move on to item three now?
Sure. Thank, excuse me, thank you, Mayor. Item three is that DIRTT Task Force recommendations and what to do with those, how to move forward with updating those. I give you a pretty good summary, I think, of what the last process was in your packet, and why it was done, and what the criteria was for selecting the projects, how they were graded, who was on the committee. And so if you read that, you should got a pretty good background. So the question this evening is, how would you like to move forward with making sure that the list, the DIRTT Task Force list, is current to today's times? And if anything else needs to be added, do they need to be reprioritized and such? And we don't have a lot of time if we want to do something potentially for, if you're looking out for November, potentially putting something on the ballot. I think we're shooting to have any recommendations from any new board back to City Council at that June 6th, I believe, study session would be kind of a date to shoot for. So that would give us a, if you gave us direction tonight, it'd give us a good month, four to five weeks to get a process going. So with that, I'll just turn it over to you.
So we need a discussion on the, repeating the methodology or the projects? I mean, how, do we want to go as deeply as it was before with the different criteria? Or do we want to sift from what was here? Here we go, Mr. Pond.
I just want to reboot the conversation to basically where we ended up, I think, at the study session last time. And so I do think there's some timelines, and I'll mess these up a little bit. So, Patrick, I may ask you to help me. But generally speaking, we talked about trying to see if we couldn't, in the assembly of this group and the task of this group, frame it in such a way that they could meet and report back out, essentially, within a month. It's about a month duration. Prior to June 6th, I think, is maybe the date?
Report back out to, at June 6th, at that meeting.
June 6th, is that a study session?
Yes.
So I think, just to frame some of the things, I mean, that's obviously a short duration, it's a shorter duration perhaps than the original DIRTT Task Force. However, I don't know, I don't know that the consensus last time was, in fact, that it was, it had to be recreated as much as refreshed. And I've heard that a couple of times. So I just want to chime in. And my point of view is, getting this, obviously, there's some things that were on the list that are done or partially done, that should be addressed, and they should be off the list, or they should be, the scope that's remaining should be articulated. Things that maybe weren't on the radar when this group initially assembled but are on the radar now should be brought to the group for their attention. And essentially, this is, you know, relatively short and sweet. Do we have the, do we have the list generally correct? And is it, and is it in the, is it still in the right order type of thing? And to me, it would seem like, you know, they might meet four or five times, once a week, something like that, just making that up. But, and be able to get from here, from here to there, if we are expeditious about placing community members on the task force and providing it with them with the scope of work, I think that we could get that done.
Ms. M.
Thank you. Okay, what I would like to see, first and foremost, is, I know that there's some things, I've got the list here, of what we've completed within, from 2007 to now. So if we could clean that up, that would narrow that list down. But most importantly, what I'd like to see is a group of citizens on this DIRTT Task Force, strictly citizens, maybe bringing in a couple that participated in this process back in 2007. I did reach out to a couple of them. I heard back from one that would like to be back on... out to a couple of them. I heard back from one that would like to be back on, in the, you know, involved in the process. I think we need a fresh set of eyes, some citizens that are not entrenched in any type of a group or have been involved necessarily in a lot, but yet have been involved enough to know what's going on to kind of prioritize this. I think putting it in their hands allows them to feel like they're involved, they're vested and they're they're being heard. And I think it also helps them to see why we need a sales tax increase, the things we need to take care of. They can have some, you know, hands-on type of involvement. So I also think that this is more of a review. We're not reinventing the wheel. We're just kind of putting together what still needs to be done. If there are some new things that need to be done, add those. What I would also like to see is a list of maybe projects that we've done that weren't on this list originally. If you could get those to us, I think that would be beneficial. Let's see. I think meeting once a week for the month of May will kind of keep us in that timeline. I think, I don't know, I think nine, you know, citizens on there. You guys can tell me what you think about that. And I'd like to get a consensus when we're done, you know, if everybody kind of shares their thoughts. But that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we look at the sort of topic areas or subject matters that are involved in the Dirt Task Force and we're looking at potentially bringing this for consideration relative to increased revenues to cover these projects, I would like to see if we can whittle down the potential categories to really focus on those areas that are of critical infrastructure and and other needs. So we have several items in here like power line undergrounding, information technology, land banking, and in to a lesser extent, the parks trails and facility improvements, which may be necess, which may be needed, but may not be as critical as it relates to infrastructure and street maintenance and other projects that have a more critical aspect to them. And that may flush out under the scoring method that is considered. But I'd hate to see a recommendation come back with land banking and IT and parks and trail improvements come above any other type of really critical projects that we need to consider. And that, again, may come out through the scoring, but I think it would be in our best interest to consider whittling down the project areas to really focus on, again, those projects that if we went to the citizens for their requests and sales tax increase, that it would be something that would be obviously needed as opposed to particular wants. And looking at this list, there's a lot of needs on there. And I'm not saying that we don't need some of these improvements, but I think it's important to start off with focusing on only those items that we absolutely need and that we're not going to be able to, in the next, let's say, nine years, be able to cross it off the list with other revenues. Because as I look at this list, there's a significant number of these items that have been completed through various private, private-public partnerships and other funding arrangements and whatnot. And so I want to make sure that we're not taking a project that could otherwise be funded through some other means and placing it to the voters to say, fund this with a sales tax increase. So I just, and again, that may be able to be accomplished through how the task force scores these projects, but I just want to make sure that that's a critical aspect of how we approach this. Thank you.
Let me, let me say that I appreciate that you're thinking in terms of what's needed. I think it also be before you even get that far, you would have to determine how something is needed, meaning that the effect of creating this or finishing this or completing this project does what? To to get maybe a deeper need, because you may have a project that would contribute to economic development, but it doesn't seem to be needed. And yet, what we need to do is generate more income so we could do more of these projects. So I think that's some of the underlying things as we as we discuss these projects is really, what is our our main goal and how do we get there? Which these things smell the best? Now, I had a bunch of answers on which ones first. Larry, I believe it was you.
I have a little bit of a mixed bag here and it kind of intertwines with what some people have been saying is, we look a little grim if we just look at what we got done on the original Dirt Task Force, 'cause it doesn't seem like we got very far. And I've got a list here of about 12 projects at least that weren't on the Dirt Task Force that did get done. So that's a, it's not so grim. I mean, we did not just sit still and and not get anything accomplished since 2007. I mean, you know, Discovery Park, you know, Hollow Park, Tabor Street improvements, there's stuff there that did happen. One thing that I would like to to do, what Zach was talking about, is kind of make sure we, how do we, how do we maintain our priorities a little bit so that we're not shotgunning as opportunities come up? You know, if we can kind of get a mission statement, but I hate mission statements, but a a view of where we want to be with this so that we're not doing a piece over here and a piece over here and the pieces never quite come together. You know, if we can kind of coordinate so that when we get done, it's just like I asked for, you know, maybe we could do something with that Bradley Station, 'cause that would still, that would that would complete a piece and not leave a checkerboard. We we have gotten a lot of things done here when you when you start looking at things that you just kind of forget about that weren't on the original Dirt Task Force. But and in lieu of the big projects too, I think that when we consider what we're gonna try and do in the next 10 years, we've got two major projects on the books right now. And are they gonna augment or fit in? Are we, or are we gonna, you know, it's, I'd like to see to it that whatever we do, we can, kind of like a critical path schedule, that that things are gonna fit and one thing's gonna complement the other maybe, rather than just having a piece here and there. Then it gets lost in the shuffle.
Wadsworth is being one of those, is that, yeah.
So are you asking for a, listen, a timeline, is that what you're asking?
Well, I I think that would be good. I mean, I think that when we get the, there's two, two different types of timelines. One is cash flow and the other is actual, just a timeline. So as we get all these projects, I think, I know Scott's got the ability to look at and say, well, yeah, well, that's a one-year deal or that's a two-year deal. But it would help you see how that's gonna fit with the other major projects that are going on in the city and also help us then establish what our cash flow needs would be and how it all fit together. But, you know, that's, I'm just concerned that we, if we're gonna establish some priorities that we have that commission statement, we may be, there's always gonna be changes. I mean, I remember one project I built, one of the first corners that was gonna get done, turned out to be the last one that got done on the job because things were in the way and everything changed. So I understand that. It's not a criticism, but it's just an observation. If we try and, you know, stay coordinated with our efforts, people might see more output rather than just driving past spot projects. And we may have to prioritize too. One of my guys that I talked to in my district said, you know, I like to ride bikes, but I'd rather see you fix a street than put in another bike lane right now. And to him, it just made sense to get your meat and potatoes done before you have the frosting. That's my comment.
I hear you're looking for more organization, a little pre-thought. Ms. Davis, you're ready, I believe?
I actually would like to mirror most and agree with most what everyone said. I think it's fine that we have a citizens group, no elected officials. I I think that's fine. I think, you know, the number to be determined, if if we're fortunate enough to get nine, if we're fortunate enough to get 11, I don't know that I would turn two people away. We don't want it too big, but, you know, I think if we've got people with feedback, I agree. I think that this is kind of a review and a refresh, that there are some big projects. I think staff, it is nice to have staff involved only so that they can share maybe some things that they've experienced. You know, perhaps with the development on the west side of I-70, maybe it slowed down because we don't have hook ramps coming off of I-70 there and it is a big infrastructure need. I think the idea that we do need to raise funds for Wadsworth, I I think that kind of background is still necessary to present to some of these citizens or to the citizens so that they know know the interests. I agree. I think that it's kind of, if we don't have good roads, we're not gonna have good bike lanes either because they're gonna be all mucked up and and potholed and gravelled and all those types of things. So I I agree with with everything that everyone said. I think it's, the one thing I think is gonna be difficult is to, it's hard to select people and not, I I'd rather just select folks that are interested versus choosing them on who who they might be or who they, I mean, I I think that's hard to say when you, if you're, I I don't like to use the word special interest groups, but I I think it's hard to do that because, and I think what we would need to do is come to them with a clear vision, that you're not here to represent that special interest group or that, you know, your, your, your vision, but you're here to represent all of the city and to take a look at these projects and prioritize and see what needs to get done. Because I do think that we all have a history, we all have a background, we all have a knowledge of certain things that we could come to the table and add to it, not be excluded because we have that. So that would be the only part, because that's, that's tough. Because the good news is, is most everybody in our community who is involved, they are involved in different things. If it's Keep Wheat Ridge Local, if it's Citizens for an Inclusive Wheat Ridge, if it's AT&amp;T, if it's, you know, whichever it might be, I think all these folks are involved. And I don't want to exclude them because of that involvement. So that would, that would be my only feedback, that we give them a statement of this is your, this is your mission or this is what's requested of you. We want you to come with a full mind and not a, an agenda.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
What I'm hearing here is a lot of agreement. I don't, I don't hear any big disagreement among us. So let me just try this and and just open this up for discussion.
I think Ms. Wooden wants to add. Oh.
Okay, I I have a few comments in general. Number one being regarding staff. And I don't know how this is going to work and I don't think we've really defined it, but I can see how much we need staff's input and how many questions we ask them. I think it might be important, and considering the timeliness and the short timeline that we're working on, that there might be a staff member from Public Works or wherever might be the most beneficial that might sit in on these meetings. And I'm assuming that the residents would be, quote, maybe the, making the consensus and maybe the staff would be there for information. But I do think it's important to have staff because if they have 20 questions and then we're gonna waste time going back to, say, Scott and saying, can you answer this, this and this, when they might have been able to answer those questions right there in the room. So maybe considering staff present at these meetings for the purpose of information because they have a wealth of information that we ask and that we need. And I'm, I know the citizens are gonna need to, so I'd like us to consider that. And I'm, I'm not totally against it, but I'm just wondering why a business owner might not be considered because in some of these projects, it could directly affect some business owners. And if we do eventually consider some type of a tax increase, it it might affect those business owners. It might be something to think about as, should a business owner be represented to maybe get their point of view? So that's just a suggestion. And as far as selecting people, it's, I agree with Christie, it's gonna be hard to say, this person has done this, but they're not a technical member of a certain group? Or has this person volunteered for helping out on a certain festival, but they're not a member of a certain group? It might be hard for us to define who is who. And if we have people interested in each district and we can't decide, we might put names in a hat and pull out the names. It might come down to luck of the draw. But getting people from the different areas, I think, is somewhat important so that we have all districts represented. But how we come about that, if you have two people in a district, it might be those two people. And if you have more, it might be just pulling names out of a hat because they've come forward and they'd say, they've said, willing to spend the time, I'm willing to be interested. And if these other issues are a problem, maybe just pulling names out of a hat is is partial solution. As far as what we're going, what they are going to be doing, I agree that we need to come up with some priorities and general guidelines to give them and and let them know this is generally what we're looking for. And as they move along through their discussions, they may come back to us after week two and ask for clarification. And and we might have to discuss it for a little bit then too, as to where do we want them to go?
So we need a task force before the task force. Mr. N.
I agree that we probably need someone from staff there just to kind of moderate, answer questions. What I would like to see is maybe an orientation, once those citizens are decided upon. Maybe we could have an orientation to kind of let them know what our our goal is, what what they need to do and how the process is gonna be. What I would support more as far as how to pick the citizens on here is maybe to have them apply according to their district and we can put their names in a hat and it can be drawn out that way. I just, I know what our intention is. I just don't want it to be perceived as, okay, so-and-so council member picked this person. I don't want any shadows on this process. I want it to be clean. I want it to be open. So I would support putting hats, putting their names in a hat, however many apply, if it's five, 10, two per district, and then we just draw them.
I I just have one more quick comment regarding that. Just that when these people apply, that what we're really looking for is, number one, they want to do it. And number two, I think they should, I mean, if it's five meetings, I think we should ask them to commit to five meetings.
Oh, sure.
So that we're asking them, can you fulfill this commitment of five meetings? I think that's fair because we want their input for the whole time and not have somebody say, okay, only be at two.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Just, I wanna, I'm gonna jump back and so that we're ready to, with the consensus. So it's the 25th. If we're going to try to hit four, you know, like weekly meetings in the month of May, we really have to be resolved by this by next, next week, next Monday, which is the second. That's, that's short order. And I think we we pretty much need to be hitting the the ground running at that point where we've got an understanding of who the participants are gonna be, who the staff liaison is going to be, and, you know, some of the bones of of what the agreements and what the, what the outcomes are. We need that by next Monday, otherwise, we're not going to hit this. So I, I don't think, I don't necessarily agree with an odd number of people. I realize a voting, a voting thing, but we're really looking for consensus, not hard votes on this. And I think it would be awkward to figure out whose district is gonna have a higher representation than another. And these are, and and we're talking about items that are across, across the board on the map. I do not recommend us going with an odd number. If we have a tie vote, we have a tie vote. It's a, it's a consensus anyway. So that that is telling in and of itself. I'm, I don't know about pulling out of a hat. That would not be my preferred way. I have no problem with the, with the suggestions and requests that have come up here or that were presented in the right to speak section. In other words, let's get fresh faces here. Let's really try to get people who who haven't been, you know, engaged heavily in in certain points of view. I, I, I mean, I look at that in the most, you know, in in the most benign way, which is, yeah, we need, we need people with fresh, with with a fresh perspective on it. So, I mean, I'm willing absolutely to to look for people or put it out there very much in that way. You know, and what I would ask is that, for instance, in our district, Tim and I are able to communicate out and see who we get and and maybe we provide four names and we whittle it down to two. You know, we 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 draw a couple out of a hat. But I I'd like to be able to do the initial, the initial sorting of that so that we can communicate with our constituents appropriately and get them set up for all of the things that we need to set them up for. What is this gonna be about? How many, how many days am I committed to? What is the conversation? We have to have some personal conversations with people to get through that. We have to have some personal conversations with people to get through that, and, and so I think that helps us, you know, my suggestion would be, you know, to, let us, let us give you four and we'll, and we'll get it down to two or something like that.
Let me, let me, so you would like to, to fresh faces, and you would reach them?
I'm agreeing with everything I said.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would look at the, either the Chair of this committee, or who's ever leading this committee, to obviously be a member of that committee, but looking at, uh, the past members and, and thinking about the comment made earlier that, um, one or more of the members would be previous members of the Dirt Task Force, um, may or may not, I want to make sure that, that it's led properly, when, you know, somebody that's able to kind of guide them through that as a member of that committee, I don't know who that necessarily would be, but I, I want to make sure that, that they have that capacity to sort of provide that leadership through that process, and I don't necessarily have.
Or you could have a staff person.
I, I, I wouldn't necessarily ask staff to do that.
I mean, just to, just to respond to that, I, I agree, although in most of our, in most of our commission settings, those are, those are, um, appointed by the committee themselves, right? So I, I mean, I don't know that we should be picking a leader versus, we, we, you know, we are laying down the requirement that the committee needs to pick a leader.
No, but, but there has to be a Chair of the committee.
Yeah, so that, I mean, but they can elect it.
That, that's fine, okay.
I, I do agree, and I think that's, you've touched on a couple of the problems, one is you do need to have somebody in charge, and the other is we have to have an agenda. So I, we, we definitely have to have the appropriate person from the city, I'm not sure it has to always be the same person, but we do have to have somebody, you know, a staff member from the city.
Sure.
Uh, but we do have some, have to have somebody who's appointed to be in charge of this, whether it's elected by the members, or whatever, there has to be someone who's in charge.
And, and, yeah. Go ahead, Zach. I want to make sure that, obviously, having staff support for this is critical, providing that information on a real-time basis to keep the ball moving, that's a given. I, I would agree with the aspect of, once that committee is formed, they look around amongst each other, and whoever agrees to take the reins as the Chair of that committee, that's the case. And I think that that would be sort of a, a fair way to do it, and that's how I would approach it.
That's what I was just going to respond to, I've been, in, in my 14 years, I've been on, we've had many of these different types of groups, and, and I think pretty much every one of them has been formatted that same way. A committee comes together, they select their own chairperson to, to run the group, and staff's there simply for logistics, to answer questions and help, um, do the logistics and get the meeting dates set and all that stuff, so, um, we've, we've been through this, and I, I wouldn't suggest we disappoint one staff member necessarily, um, Heather, Heather Geyer was one that facilitated, helped facilitate the Dirt Task Force last time, um, we might have one person that just facilitates overall, but I, I can see that you might have to have Scott there one night to answer questions about Public Works projects, Joyce about parks projects, and, and so staff may kind of rotate in and out just to answer questions.
So I'm wondering if, if, going back to the selection, if maybe, um, we can have a consensus, because I know time is of the essence, so I'm afraid that the more, if we have to create an application and then send out an application and those types of things, if we do something similar to what Mr. Pond said, is, that maybe as a district, we work together, uh, we, we both reach out to the folks we know, um, again, we've been told fresh faces, um, that we reach out, we try to, you know, reach out to some folks that I know who called me about certain street, or certain why isn't this getting done, or those types of things, we reach out to those folks, we ask them, is this something you'd be interested in, and then, you know, Zach and I work together, uh, between now and the next meeting, and we say, here's our two people, and it's how Zach and I work it out. If we each were able to get one, and yay, and we're both like, okay, good, fresh faces, follows, meets everything, fine, if we end up with four and we have to draw names, then, you know, maybe that's how we do it. So I, I'm just wondering if, if we could all agree to work together to come up with two for the next meeting, and then from there, maybe at the next study session, work on the agenda and expectations, well, we kind of know the expectations, but in more detail. That's just my thought.
Gosh, you're all working together so well, I think I got Jen over here.
I'm, I'm okay with opening, I mean, contacting people that might be interested, but I'd also like to include just anyone, and so if we could maybe put it out there that whoever wants to apply, if they could send their application, it's got to be so simple, it's got to be name, where you live, your phone number, can you do these five, four meetings, five meetings, and maybe a sentence about why are you interested, just super simple, but okay with us reaching out to people we know, but also just opening up to everyone, because people out there watching this or that may have heard about this might be interested, and just send it into the city clerk, let the city clerk collect them, and then we can go from there.
I think, Mr. Anderson.
So I'm good with that, as long as we're going to make an effort to get new faces, new people involved, if, can we put it on our website?
Yeah, we can get something out tomorrow, if you, um, if you want us to put a quick blurb out and, and ask them to, um, yeah, we'll, we'll take care of the logistics, yeah.
Great, and then meanwhile, we can still reach out into our districts too. Now, if there's someone that's interested, are we going to have them come or contact Janelle, let them know that they're interested, or how are we going to work that?
It's up to you, do I want to contact you directly, or?
Well, here's.
A clearinghouse somewhere.
It could be a clearinghouse, but here's the thing, I really believe that we got to kind of close, close it on Friday, or, or, we, we have to know what they are, because we need to be able to show up on Monday and say, here's my, you know, here's my two, or here's my four, and, and we're going to whittle it down to two or whatever, and we need to do that next Monday if we're going to stay on track, so we, we can't create a process that people get lost, right, where they actually get into, into a queue, or into an email, and then we're not, we're not fed the information with enough time to actually be responsive and make the calls. So I would request, um, that if we do, and I agree, let's put it out there, but that we're very clear that, you know, we're, we're asking people to simply kind of dedicate, you know, say where they're at, um, in terms of district, and, and we give a deadline on, on Friday so that we can make some calls before Monday.
And if we could also put, when we're announcing that, the commitment?
Yeah.
You know, the, the whole month of May, approximate, you know, approximation of what they're, yep, exactly.
Okay.
Are we trying to work out all the details because we need to tonight?
I'm sorry, Joyce?
Well, I mean, there's so many details, what evenings and, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, we won't necessarily put that out for the, we won't have that information for the announcement.
Just gathering in folks who are interested.
Yeah, yep.
And you have, going to have to gather enough of them, because, um, the fact that the details could wipe so many, mom, I worked that night, you know, I can't get a sitter, or whatever it is.
Um, it hasn't been necessarily stated, and this, this is the way it was for the previous task force, but I'm assuming we're eliminating, uh, limiting the participation to Wheat Ridge residents exclusively, I'm assuming that. And then is there any consideration for youth members that there was previous to, to that, or is there any sort of?
Timeline.
It's up to each district.
I mean, you mean to have it?
So my daughter, Isabella?
Just, just one caution, if, if we decide, for example, that we get, we're going to have two people per district on this committee, uh, we should either make a rule in advance that a tie vote means no, or we should have the mayor, uh, suggest one person, or we have some way so that a four-four doesn't stall me the whole process.
It's just. You've got an idea?
Well, I think Janelle just brought up a pertinent question, we probably need to decide on a night, so that people that are applying, you know, if they've got bowling on Friday night.
That's what I was just saying.
Yeah.
You'd have to have enough to where you know that you can gather.
So based on availability and where they're going to meet, that ought to be on, stated upfront.
You know, meaning that you'll, you'll have a majority, you know.
Oh, let them decide?
Yeah, exactly. Oh, let them decide, okay. Uh, but there was something else that passed, oh, this, this deal about the vote.
Yeah, well, I don't think we're, I'm not real clear that we've reached an agreement on how many people. So I, my suggestion would be.
Four times three would be two.
Two people per district, and the, the two council people per district can decide from the applicants and/or people they know, who, who that they are going to appoint, and that the mayor appoint one person.
Yay!
As a, as a tiebreaker, as.
I have to drop out of a hat.
So, yeah, and keeping.
Keeping in mind that we want somebody who's going to have a picture of the good of the city, not a, not an agenda, but, uh, right.
So two, that would be eight, two, four, six, eight, we got eight people on the.
You have nine, because you didn't appoint one.
Nine, that's, that's probably a good size.
I agree with eight, I don't, I still don't agree with nine, and, and it's, and it's mostly because it's two things, it's the parity across the districts, but it's also, I would, I would feel differently if I felt like, um, like a hard vote result was, was actually critical, and I don't think it is. It's a consensus, it's a consensus-based, it's a consensus-based, um, task that I think we're asking them to do. If I'm wrong about that, then I might change my mind, but if it's a consent, if we're asking them to, to find consensus amongst a group, I, then I'm not, I'm not concerned about having a tie.
Well, if you do the same as last time, it was, it was a ranking, so everybody, everybody was able to rank, and then, then the rankings came out, it wasn't a vote, if that's, if you want to.
Eight or five or three.
Yeah, so it wasn't, yeah.
So it doesn't matter.
So you could have 10, you could have 100 people.
Sort out by the projects, yeah. Excellent, yeah, it doesn't matter.
Nobody's.
Exactly.
So what is that, are we doing eight or nine?
Eight.
Eight. So we're going to bring our two next week?
Yes, does it deadline this way? And is there some kind of application, or can someone just send us an email that I'm interested?
Can they do an application to Janelle?
Do you want an application, or we can, we can do the board and commission application?
Do you want it online?
Like that, yeah.
Use the board and commission application?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, you know, that's almost too complicated, I think, like, what you were saying was, um, something really simple, and I don't think we need that whole, we can, we can chop it down a little bit.
It's pretty simple, just has your name and, yeah, well, we, we can do something very simple, and get, get it out tomorrow.
And put it, and put it on the website, and it will also be available?
Yeah, we'll do all of our social media outlets and, and put it in your office and.
Is there anything the council would particularly want, like you've lived in the city for a year or two, or it doesn't matter?
That's one of the questions.
Ten days. All right, fresh face?
Okay, we'll do a very simple form, so that we have their info, their contact information, and then you guys can contact them, and ask why they want to do it, what district they're in.
So you will keep us, go forward those emails to us?
Yes.
And the deadline will be Friday?
Friday, at five, four.
Age limit?
No.
And that application will be on our website?
Yes.
Well, I don't want to bring in his daughter.
Yep.
And, Madam Mayor, I want to, there's, there's one thing about committees, and I think you're all assuming it, but I want to make sure that you're, it doesn't end up being a problem, are you council folks going to pick people from your district, so that there's equal representation? I, I figured that, but unless you say it, you never know.
We're going to get together and rank them, one to five, or one to how many I get.
So somebody needs to actually voice the consensus, I guess, we actually have a consensus here.
Yes, we got it.
Got it?
Each member brings one of the two, right?
Patrick, can we?
We'll both, we'll bring them together. Yeah, that's your deal, you got to figure that out.
Do we, do we have enough time on the agenda then at Monday night's study session to, because I, we'll, we'll want, we'll have another discussion around, you know, around this, probably to just set scope or, or something just.
Yep, we will.
Okay.
Point of order, can we point them on the study session? Can we take that action?
Probably.
I don't mind, I was just.
No, policy question.
You can always set just a very quick special meeting at the end of the study session for the purpose of making the appointment. That, that's no problem, we'll check into that and make sure the right notices go out.
Thank you.
All right, we're good, I believe, have we, have we got everything complete on that? Patrick, can I, all right?
Madam Mayor? I, are you going to do, I, I know we went through council members, right, and I didn't say anything, can I say it now since it's the end of study session? I had actually talked to Mr. Dahl briefly about if he could give us a short synopsis of the issue of council members and how they may interact with a ballot issue question, and he had sent us a memo about a year and a half ago, and I know there's some question out in the public about that, and I know he, he was just going to explain to us in general, so that there's a little bit of information out there, out to the public as to what the council members may and may not do regarding a ballot issue question, and what you can financially support, because that question has come up in the public, and as we get closer to the election, I know it's going to come up again, so just kind of what the law is.
Sure, I've regularly done that over the years, usually in anticipation of election, and I've got on the machine, I'll look it up, tune it up if it needs it, and I'll just route it to all of you.
Great question. I believe we can adjourn.
Thank you.